Um, well, under old business, it was not a short discussion, but what we have here is like the second sentence. Uh, I think I said a little more than I don't recall how soon the needs, uh, I think I said something a little more expansive than that, so I...
Would it be, uh, would it be acceptable to you and the rest of the committee to approve the minutes contingent upon Ms. Broni going back and seeing if she can't expand to that?
That would be fine with me.
Okay. Further comments or suggestions regarding minutes?
Mr. Chairman, it's a, it's a fine point and not worth quibbling about, but noted that I was absent, I prefer to be reflected as excused as my absence was predicted and announced in advance and so forth.
I would agree with that, Mr. Chairman. I did, I did mention it prior to the meeting. In addition, I know you notified the staffs, so...
All right, we will ask that the minutes be modified in that respect. In the future, I think it's a better practice if someone moves to excuse the absent member, but we'll just keep that in mind going forward. Any other changes to the minutes? Ms. Broni, would you call, poll the commissioners on the minutes, please?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. McGory?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Zuloff?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Ms. Castile?
Yes.
Those minutes are approved with those various modifications noted. We have under old, old, old...
Ageing.
Business, uh, the approval of the floodplain administration portion of, of a planning, zoning and planning code. I recall that we, since having, we, let's see, um, that's to remind me, Mr. Hile, since we have tabled this in the past and moved on, um, I don't think we need to do anything more other than to discuss it and hold a vote. Could you correct me if I'm wrong about that?
For the floodplain ordinance?
Yes.
Yes, so specifically at the last meeting, it was tabled to this meeting, just for one time, so we don't have to remove it from the table. You can start discussion, it's, it is pending, I guess is the best way to put that. And I guess if you want some more specifics, I believe what is specifically pending is the draft that was sent in your packet, which has already been amended by this commission. You, there were a few motions to amend it, directing staff to add specific language, that has been added, and so now what is before you all is that most recent draft with all those amendments included, and so it's up for, uh, to this commission's prerogative on what you want to do next.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Zuloff?
So, yeah, I was, I was hoping for some clarification of that. I don't remember if we ever got around to moving to amend the motion. The original motion was for the original draft, so I didn't, I, I just wanted to make sure we got around to amending the motion, uh, to, uh, make it apply to the new draft. And I couldn't remember if we did, and I was looking for it in the minutes in this time, and it wasn't there, so that means that either we didn't do it or we did it in the prior meeting. Instead of digging through minutes in memory if we're not absolutely sure, one alternative would be to vote this down and make a new motion for, for, for the, for the current, if that's a solution, I don't know, but I, I just wanted to make sure that if, uh, that we were voting on the amended version and, and not the first draft.
So, I think we are voting, and Mr. Hile, would you, would you clarify that? I think we are voting on the amended legislation.
I just don't, I just don't recall.
It was amended, the motions to amend it passed, those have been incorporated, those amendments have been incorporated in actual text since they were made on the floor, and now you're voting on the amended version.
Got it.
Thank you.
Which is what's before you.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Please.
We have had a bunch of internal meetings about this, just to help the commission move forward with the legislation, and I've prepared some kind of high-level comments of, if that would be helpful to...
I think it would be helpful, thank you.
Okay, so just, just zooming way out, FEMA updated their guidelines, and this is kind of prepared based on the conversation last time and previous meetings. So FEMA updated their regulations, so we are moving to update our regulations to be in compliance with, in compliance with what FEMA did. They have updated data and science on Lake Erie and how the Lake Erie coastline behaves and how flooding occurs on the Lake Erie coastline, so they rec, they completely updated their maps and legislation and floodplain regulations for the Lake Erie coastline based on that data and that flooding modeling. They provided a baseline ordinance for us, and that's what we use, that's what the public works, the engineers in the public works department used to update this ordinance, it was a model ordinance given to us by FEMA. So Mr. Snyder sent you a men, a memo in addition to your packet for this meeting that included the various things that were updated in that draft, and that, and that's before you today. And so he's got all that summarized. If you have further questions, there was a couple moments of discussion last month that, that there might be some more questions, so Josh is here to discuss that. And most of the conversation has centered around the freeboard requirement, so I just wanted to touch on that a little bit. So our understanding of freeboard, based on the conversations we've had, is that, you know, FEMA draws that line based on their floodplain compli, uh, their calculations of where the floodplain exists, and those have been updated, so there's actually more floodplain in the updated maps than there used to be. Then they state if development happens within that floodplain, what elevation the development must be built to in order to be reasonably safe from flooding. So our current regulations add two feet of freeboard, which is just like two feet above what FEMA says, and the updated set of floodplain regulations includes an update to the base requirements. It does not include a freeboard, that's what is in front of you today. So imposing a freeboard is allowed by FEMA, but if we do that, we should be able to justify that. So we don't have the modeling software to say that one or two feet, we don't have any basis to argue that one or two feet would make development safer. Nothing would prohibit builders from building above that base elevation, so if we pass the FEMA model ordinance with the base elevation as they recommend, an individual builder or property owner could elect to build above that elevation if they choose, if they think that's safer their property, based on what their engineers and their site experts are telling them. So just as a planning division, and again, we want to just compile these high-level comments for you, we look to the city engineer and the public works department as the experts on this portion of the planning and zoning code, and we, after the conversation, they kind of helped us understand in simplest terms, uh, what this means and what's in front of you. We support their recommendation of public works to adopt the model ordinance as presented to you with no additional freeboard requirement. So I just wanted to cover that. Like I said, we've had a lot of discussions internally, Josh is here with the summary if you wanted to talk a little bit more about what is in that draft legislation, and obviously Brendan can answer where you are in the motions process, so thank you.
Mr. Chairman, it's one of your pleasures, would you like to hear from Mr. Snyder in terms of a summary?
Mr. Chairman?
Would you like to hear from Mr. Snyder?
Um, I don't think there's going to be anything new. Uh, I don't want to make any more arguments, I think I've made all the arguments I can, and, and I'd feel like I'd have to respond because I don't agree with some of those views, so there's, unless there's something new, I don't, I don't see anything more to talk about.
Mr. McGory?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for staff. Am I to understand that the Sandusky model ordinance has been fine-tuned to basically start with the FEMA model ordinance and then add whatever fine tuning we want locally, and it's been updated and corrected for typographical errors, and the only real issue that remains is to have a freeboard, an additional freeboard requirement or not, or somewhere in between? It has, is, is, is there any, anybody in this room that is saying that there are other issues that are at play at this point?
Mr. Snyder, are you aware of any others?
No more issues of, of discussion that Planning Commission has brought up. For the most part, you're correct, we have added for consistency's sake, and as was suggested by Planning Commission, terminology to be uniform. Formerly known as the hundred-year flood is now the 0.2% annual chance flood.
Okay.
Kind of a statistical play on words, however, um, that is now uniform throughout the ordinance. There was also the additional recommendation which has been incorporated, Mr. Hile alluded to was, uh, when someone does come for a variance from the elevation, whatever it be, with, with or without, uh, a freeboard on it, when they go to Board of Zoning Appeals, they need to state what they are building to, which is, which is different from how it is now. They do not have to explain or justify how low they're going below the base flood elevation, whether it's what we set or what FEMA sets.
So once they get a variance?
They can put...
It can, it can be 20 feet below the, the set, uh, level?
Correct, that, and, and that's how it is currently. That question is not a item of consideration when it goes to Board of Zoning Appeals, is they don't consider how much lower are you going below the standard. Obviously, it's a risk that the owner runs by, by putting it at a lower elevation, and anecdotally, not a good idea, but not prohibited, uh, or even asked at this point by Board of Zoning Appeals when a, a owner or builder wants to build below...
Now the requirement would be just that they spell out what, what they're going to shoot for if they get the variance?
That...
So the variance would be con, conditioned on them doing, doing that same level?
That would be a consideration when BZA is considering a variance. So you, their, uh, inquiry as to how much variance below, below the base elevation, a structure is going to be placed, could help them make the decision whether they approve or deny a variance at the point of Board of Zoning Appeals.
It surprises me that variances could have been granted in the past without knowing what was, what the request was. In other words, any other variance, I think we require knowing what you're asking for specifically, but, so really, that's kind of a procedural requirement, maybe a somewhat substantive, um, and then, uh, descriptive language changes, but the real issue, as I understand it, is still to have a freeboard requirement in addition to the FEMA model or not, or somewhere in between.
Well, and, and, and that's what staff, staff's recommended, to take, take freeboard out of, um, out of the updated ordinance.
I, I understand that.
Yeah.
But, but that's only the, I'm just saying that for our purposes as a commission, it seems to me that that's the decision we need to make today, everything else is pretty much resolved, that's, that's what my question is.
That's my understanding of the chair.
Yeah, I, I don't think any other questions or items of concern have come up beyond that.
Thank you, Mr. Snyder, for, for summarizing all that and explaining that background, it's helpful. Mr. Miller?
Mr. Chairman, um, not that it's a substantive point, but a couple of, um, comments or questions. I don't recall seeing the complete text with the revisions incorporated, and I'm not saying it doesn't exist, and maybe I'm like technically behind, I apologize for not being available at the last meeting, but I don't have a printed document of what we are approving today. And second, um, in the floodplain ordinance changes summary, there's a couple of links to click on, presumably would reveal a couple of maps that I'd find interesting. Again, if I could get a hard copy of those printed maps, it'd be helpful for me to know exactly what we're talking about in terms of area and revisions to the, to the floodplain. Not that I'm not prepared to vote today, I can, because this freeboard thing, I feel like we have hammered on that for a long time now. But my third comment, on the second page of the changes summary, I found it pretty interesting, and that I would like to just follow up on to make sure that I'm not misunderstanding. The note at the bottom about the FEMA requirement at 570, 577.2, in order to get insurance for that $200,000, $250,000 house, it'd be a little over three grand, but if they built with a two-foot freeboard, the insurance would be substantially cheaper. And really, what we're getting to is that's on whoever built it how cheaply, and whoever's sucker enough to buy it, and anybody who owns their own property and building their own stuff, they know better, and they won't be deceived, they will build for a lower insurance rate if that economically makes sense. Do I, do I have that?
Yeah, yeah, that, and that was the reason I, I put that example in there is, is for, for what it's worth, um, whether we, we impose this, uh, elevation or a homeowner decides to build to that level, obviously, they realize the risk reward, um, or initial cost versus long-term cost of doing just the minimum or elevating it exceptionally above, uh, and every foot above even 579, what our freeboard is now, every foot above is a further discount, so...
So, so if I understand it correctly, and I think you're assuring me that I do, really, this is saying, somebody who's a homeowner building to their, what they know and, and what it will cost, is in a much better position than somebody from Cleveland coming out and buying into our local market, something that a developer has made, um, based on their own calculations of what it costs selling this property and then let the buyer beware.
Yeah, and, and, and there's always the, the aesthetic consideration of a homeowner not wanting to build to an elevation because of maybe the view, maybe whatever, um, the lay of the land, that they don't want their structure projected that far out of the ground. And so, again, all part of the decision-making on a homeowner when adding an addition, a substantial addition onto a house or a new build, um, where, obviously, you know, talking specifically about floodplain insurance, is when you are lending money on a structure in the floodplain. So that specific instance, the insurer requires floodplain insurance because you're making payments on it. If you're buying it outright, floodplain insurance is not a, not a thing.
It's required.
You can, but, it's not required, yes.
I think I got it.
Yeah.
But I do believe that we were, um, I think it was Alex, or maybe it was Josh, I don't remember, uh, some, someone emailed us the complete revised, uh, ordinance, maybe it was even you, Mr. Hile, I don't remember, but we, we did receive it somehow by email.
And, yeah, like I say, technically challenged, I'm, I work with old technology, no printer, and I, I don't necessarily, I can't necessarily open all the attachments that people send me.
Understood, okay.
I'd like a hard copy.
Think you're selling yourself short, Mr. Miller, but nonetheless.
I used to have better technology, but now I'm retired, just saying.
Mr. Chairman, additional comments on the proposed legislation and the recommend, uh, the, the pending motion to recommend that to the City Commission for adoption?
So nobody has any more questions on this?
Or comments? Do you want me to call the roll?
Yeah, I, I, so now I gotta answer this, um, because, this is what I was afraid of, because, um, so we've now highlighted that it's going to cost more, and I think Mr. Miller kind of hit the nail on the head, that someone, it's obvious what a developer's going to do, they're not going to consider the long-term costs, they're gonna, it's going to be up to the victim, I mean buyer, uh, you know, to deal with the long-term costs, um, which is an additional consideration. I desperately want to vote for this, put it past this, and I can't, and I wish we would have separated it, and, you know, like, let's pass everything else and, and, and figure out the, and separate this and figure out the, the floodplain thing if, 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 if there are still questions on it, but, um, I don't know if we ever moved to do that, but I, I'd, I'd love to send a unanimous vote to get this done, whether it needs to be done right away or not, and, and, and figure out what we need to do after all these floods we, in, in the interim, all this time, uh, we've had, you know, half of Europe flooded, half of the Tennessee Valley or wherever it was flooded, we had floods in, you know, in, in Ohio, and, um, uh, it's gotta, it's gotta have us thinking.
Well, I will say this, uh, I think we've beaten this horse to the point that the flies are circling it out. And, uh, we've had a vote on adding two feet of freeboard, that did not pass. We had a vote, uh, we had a motion to add one foot of freeboard, if I recall correctly, that died for the lack of a second, and so we are where we are. And, uh, you've made your point eloquently, it's a reasoned approach, and sometimes I think it's just necessary to respectfully disagree and we take a vote. So the freeboard is not required now with this new FEMA?
My votes for one reason, and, uh, my, my no vote's going to be for one reason, and that's the freeboard.
That's, and then, well articulated.
Yeah, absolutely.
Not to be rude, Mr. Zuloff, but unless you have something further?
That's all, yeah?
I'm going to ask Ms. Broni to call the roll.
Mr. Chairman, what's, what is the motion to approve the recommendation as per staff? I'm just not sure.
The, the, as I understand it, the motion that is, the motion, I'm sorry, as I understand it, the motion that's been pending for some time that we tabled, brought back up, is to recommend, uh, this legislation to the City Commission for passage and adoption.
And amended, by the way.
As amended.
Mr. Chairman?
As recommended by the staff, as put together by the staff.
This, this new regulation that we're going to be passing, is this the FEMA new rules that there's no freeboard?
Right.
Is that, okay, all right, I'm, I'm good.
I'm sorry, who made the motion in the second?
That was made at a prior meeting, do we need to remake those?
Oh, gotcha.
A motion, a, a, yeah, we're, the motion's pending, you just, you just...
You need to make a new, a new motion to pass.
Yes.
All right, would someone care to make a motion to...
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion, if, if that's what you're asking for.
Yes, please.
I would move that we recommend to the City Commission that the legislation, the FEMA, the Sandusky legislation using the FEMA model as, uh, proposed by staff with no additional freeboard requirement, um, be approved by this commission.
I'll second.
There's been a motion in second, further discussion. Ms. Broni, would you call the roll now, please? That have been, got, let my...
Murray?
Procedure correct, yes.
Mr. McGory?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Zuloff?
No.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Ms. Castile?
No.
That motion passes, Mr. Hile, I assume?
Yes.
Simply need a full, a, a regular majority?
We got five.
Okay, very good, thank you.
I should have said this, excuse me, but I also disagree with the freeboard elimination. I, um, would have liked to vote for the changes, um, but with the zero freeboard and all the flooding and climate change, that's why I voted no. I should have said that prior to voting, but it still passes, so...
It, it still does, and I wish I knew the answer, uh, Ms. Castile, in terms of what direction the water in the, in Lake Erie and Great Lakes is going to go.
We don't.
But, uh, what, the, the, the very latest I've read is, uh, there's no consensus in terms of whether it's going to go up or go down in the long term, and so it's hard to know.
Right.
Very hard to know. All right, um, who is going to present our next item?
That'd be me.
All right, Oaks.
So we originally had three items tonight, but I was contacted by, um, the owner of 1035 Hancock Street, and they cannot be in attendance this evening, so they asked to table it until September 22nd, and staff said that was okay. So we're going to start with the...
Through the chair, if I may, pardon me, Alex. So we, since we sent out notices to the neighbors for 1035 Hancock, we would, would like to, if the chair would ask if there's any public present to speak about that, um, we want to make sure that their thoughts are on the record because they were notified that that, that would be happening this evening.
Yes, uh, very good to point that out, thank you. Is there anyone present who wishes to speak on the proposed zoning ma, zoning map amendment for 1035 Hancock Street?
Should we hear the report first, or?
Uh, I would see if there's someone here to speak.
Oh, oh, I see, this is, this is the one that's been...
Tabled.
This, this is the one, I, I see.
If I may, I would also recommend that the commission actually table it until next meeting.
Okay.
Because it is on the agenda, we did send out the notices, if anyone is here to speak on it, they can, but then obviously, table it for actual consideration discussion and a full report at the next meeting.
Very good, we, we will do that, but as a matter of courtesy, if there's someone here who wishes to speak on it, I want to make sure we give them an opportunity.
So table it after the comments?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, we've had a debate about nothing, since there's no one rushing to the microphone. So would someone care to make a motion to table the zoning map amendment for Hancock Street?
I'll, I'll second.
There's been a motion, second, discussion, not objection, motion to be approved, hearing no objection, the motion is approved, and that is tabled until our next meeting. Mr. Oaks, are you up for number two?
I am, Mr. Chairman. So we're moving on to the next one, which is a site plan application for 2016 George Street. This site is currently zoned for general man, general manufacturing, um, all adjacent zoning is also general manufacturing, existing use manufacturing, proposed is still manufacturing. The property to the west is a semi-truck dealer, and the other parcel to the west is a, is currently a warehouse, the parcel to the east is also a warehouse, the northern property is a metal processing business, and the property to the south is currently an empty lot. So the property we're talking about tonight currently contains one manufacturing building totaling just over 48,000 square feet. The new building will be 50 by 100, adding additional 5,000 square feet, and it'll be used for storage. The total footprint will cover only 34% of the lot area, um, so these area regulations are still met. Um, the site currently has 65 parking spaces, and only are required 41 spaces, the setback standards are met, the height standards are met. So based on all this, staff recommends approval, um, of 2016 George Street as long as all the applicable permits are obtained through the Building Department, Engineering Department, and any other, um, applicable agency.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks. Um, is there anyone present on behalf of the applicant who wishes to add anything, um, to what Mr. Oaks has said, and if, uh, you want to respond later on after the commissioners weigh in, that's fine, too.
Um, yeah, I'm, uh...
Could you step to the microphone and just give us your name and address so that we have all that the way we're supposed to?
Hi there, Kevin Wilson with AV Lake Construction. Um, I think you covered it pretty, pretty well, I mean, if you guys have any questions, I can try and answer them.
All right, commissioners, while you stay there, in case we have a question, comments or, um, questions for the applicants or the staff?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Zuloff?
Uh, regarding parking, it was a statement of the number of parking spaces, um, I just wanted to make sure, first of all, it sounds, did I read that there are more than required by the...
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, okay, uh, thank you. Are, are we requiring additional parking?
No.
Okay, this, this is the choice of the applicant, okay, I think that's all I needed.
Additional questions or comments? Pretty straightforward, sometimes saying less is more, so good for you to know when this comes.
Glad I could help.
Would you poll the commissioners on the motion, please? Do we have a motion? We need a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve it subject to staff recommendations.
I'll second it.
There's been a motion in second, further discussion. Now, Ms. Broni, would you call the, uh, roll, please?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. McGory?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Zuloff?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Ms. Castile?
Yes.
That motion passes, and the site application is approved. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Oaks, I'm going to guess you have the last presentation as well.
That is correct. It's another site plan application for 631 King Street, Homewood, Ohio, submitted a site plan application, um, for a new parking lot next to the new warehouse, warehouse location. Um, it's currently zoned for auto parking, um, adjacent zoning, to the north is single-family residential, south is single-family residential, east is single-family residential, and then the west is commercial service. Existing use is a vacant lot, proposed use is a parking lot, and, let's see here, the property to the west is owned by the applicant for warehousing, um, I already went over this, the property to the north is owned by the Virtual Order of the Eagles, um, and their parking lot will be abiding the current parking lot proposed.
Are you sitting over there?
Property, property's currently an empty, empty lot, the applicant's proposing over 16,000 square feet of parking space equivalent to about 50 spaces, and 1,200 square feet of new green space and landscaping, um, so the applicant stated workers will be here during regular business hours around 8:00 to 5:00, and we use the parking measurement standards based on the number of employees, which they currently state is around 40, but they're proposing 50, uh, parking spaces in hopes of expansion. So because it's 50 site, or 50 spots proposed, they will need two 100-square-feet islands and also... islands and also a tree in each of those islands. So two landscaping corners, it's kinda tough to see on the screen, but two landscaping corners, which were originally proposed as parking spots, are on the drawings to replace the islands and the space required. So each of these actually is more than 100 square feet, so they, they went above and beyond the 100 square foot minimum island requirement. So because of that, we are going to allow them to just use parking blocks for the north side of the parking lot instead of a landscaping strip, which would be required on public rights of way, and also, where was the other requirement? Yeah, so that's, that's step one for what they're doing as far as landscaping. They're also, instead of three feet on the south side of, adjacent to Monroe Street, they're, they're having five feet of landscaping space, so that extra two feet is above the required three feet, and so we are also allowing the alleyway to the, the right side of the lot to not have landscaping as well. So as a staff, we decided that we'd rather have more landscaping on the busy thoroughfares of Monroe Street and King Street, which we're gonna be having multimillion dollar resurfacing in the fall. We'd rather have the landscaping facing that direction. So from a staff's perspective, all the landscaping requirements have been met, there are four canopy trees in the right of way, which we, as a staff, are motioning to approve, and let's see here, yeah, so based on what has been shown, staff recommends approval of the site plan for 631 King Street as long as all the applicable permits retained by the Building, Engineering Department, and any other applicable agency.
Thank you, Mr. Oaks. Is there anyone here on behalf of the applicant who wishes to address the planning commission?
I'm here.
You're here, okay, well, well, we'll note that you're here, and if we have a question, we'll get to you.
Deal.
All right, very good. Commissioners, questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Zuloff?
Are, are we, I, I don't recall, I'd hoped to visit the site, I'm going from memory there, obviously go, go by there all the time, is this new sidewalk that I'm seeing on a drawing here?
On the west side, yes, adjacent to King Street, it'd be a new sidewalk, I believe.
Uh, so on King Street, it's new sidewalk?
Correct.
Right, okay, and I had myself confused because I was also working from memory on this, on this sketch. I'm a little concerned about the shrubbery, that's not technically legal, it's not on the tree lawn, so it's okay, but, you know, if you picture a stop bar there, people are gonna stop, and they're not gonna be able to see down the, so maybe backing off a few of those shrubs would be a good idea, I don't, you know, but this is trivial changes, so I'm not gonna insist on, you know, anything like that, but, but, you know, there's, there's a reason we only allow the trees and the grass on the tree lawn, is, is, is the visibility. So that is marginal, whether the junipers contribute to problems, well, they're farther back, so they're fine, junipers can be virtually ground cover, or they can be tall and troublesome, so it depends on the variety. Other than that, it's fine. I did have a question, are you, are we requiring parking for the activity across the street, or is this just simply something that the applicant wants to do?
Just simply that, what the applicant wants to do.
Yeah, okay. So, so other, other than slightly worried about the visibility of those majolias, it's all fine. I would really, over the years, this body has complained over and over again about the quality of the drawings and, and lack of scale and dimensions, so sharing that with you that, you know, in the future, maybe, you guys haven't benefited from, from all of our experience. I am subtly concerned that this new sidewalk, then, I imagine will be 33 feet from the center of the, of King Street, it's, I believe it's a 66-foot right of way. Can anybody verify that?
I don't know the exact dimensions, it does align with the existing sidewalk adjacent to the Eagles, therefore being, being linear in line with what exists sidewalk-wise.
Well, we're kinda duty-bound to make sure we know where our right of way is before we approve this, right?
Assuming the other sidewalks were put in a foot off the right of way also, Mr. Zuloff, I would assume this one, this one will be in step parallel with, with those, so if those are already off, then this one would be off also.
Well, I mean, I can assure you that, that there's no reason to think that they were done correctly, you know, 50 years ago, I mean, based on prior experience, but it'd be nice to know where, where we are, anyway, shouldn't be that hard to find the centerline of the street, it's, I, I'm quite sure it's 66 feet right of way, the street to the east is 80 feet right of way, the alley's 12, the lot's 132, it shouldn't be that hard to, you know, just make sure that we're not creating encroachment problems in the future, but, so assuming that that can all be verified, I would be inclined to vote for this.
So perhaps, Mr. Zuloff, the way to assure that that is, your objective is satisfied is that you could make a motion to approve the site plan contingent upon engineering determining that there, that the site plan does not impose an encroachment on the city's right of way, that would, that do it?
Sure. So...
Second.
An emotion second, further discussion. Ms. Broney, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Murray?
Yes.
Mr. McGory?
Yes.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Zuloff?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mr. Whalen?
Yes.
Ms. Castile?
Yes.
Motion passes, and the site plan is approved. Other items of business, commissioners or staff?
Mr. Chairman, not, not to muddy the previous agenda item, it's already through, and I'm fine with that, but I, I would like to put a second on Mr. Zuloff's observation about how this body traditionally was very involved with the precision of parking lot. Former members, it was their pet project to know exactly how many feet, not only in width but in length every parking lot was, so just making that comment.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Zuloff?
And it has been a fact that we've had applications that had, you know, parking spaces drawn in a space that we would calculate that, you know, the parking spaces were like six and a half feet wide, you know, so things like that. So that's, that's why, you know, I mean, I don't wanna be persnickety about it, but some reasonable diligence is, is, is called for, and, and it has to be in proportion to the means of the applicant. If it's, you know, four spots in, in front of a mom and pop, it's one thing, if it's a larger installation, you, it, it's, it's worth getting...
If there's a wider aisle, it's easier to make a swing with a long truck into a narrow spot, if it's a short aisle, you have hell to pay trying to get a long vehicle in.
Right, but, but the standards have to be in proportion to the scale of the project, too, I think, so, thank you.
So, Mr. Oaks, and Ms. Blair, I'm just gonna say, note the fact that this is an exact in commission, and they're gonna hold you to it, which is good.
That's an exaggeration.
All a good thing. Well, it's not that far off. Any other items of old business or business for the commission? Would someone care to make a motion to adjourn?
Through the chair, I do have a little informal update for y'all from the planning division, if you'd like to hear that before I turn to me.
Well, that's fine, I was, I'd invited that before, so we won't stand adjourned, then.
Mr. Chairman, it's been our tradition for years that the staff, the chief planner gives...
That is why I looked at Ms. Blair, but I didn't...
Sorry, I missed it.
Yeah, sorry.
Thank you, just a couple things, we have a lot of community engagement opportunities coming up in September and early October that we wanna make sure that you're all aware of, so we invite all of you to the events and hope that you'll help us spread the word to invite your neighbors and your family and friends as well. The first is a series of six neighborhood ice cream socials, so those are gonna be starting next Wednesday, September 1st, and six Wednesdays in a row in the evening, starting at 7:00 PM, and we're also gonna have a follow-up meeting every Thursday at 10:00 AM for residents that aren't able to join us at the Wednesday evening meetings, and all of those dates can be found at cityofsandusky.com/neighborhoods, we've created a webpage for those, and there should be some social media and newspapers going out, going out. I have the list of every meeting with me, if you wanna talk about that after the meeting, I can show you there, or happy to read through that if you'd prefer to hear them all right now. But the goal of those meetings is just to listen and learn, it's just, it's, it's an opportunity for us to connect with residents, celebrate the projects that have happened over the past five years, and start to envision what the priorities should be over the next five years, so we're really excited to conduct this conversation. The second thing I wanna mention, oh, also, the first one, they're, they're called ice cream socials because there will be free ice cream, just to make sure that's really clear. The second thing I wanna mention is that we are gonna hold two informal meetings to discuss the potential addition of new transient occupancy overlay districts, we've talked quite a bit about those, so there's gonna be Monday, two Mondays, Monday, September 20th and Monday, October 4th, at 6:30 PM at the fire station classroom on 600 West Market. We'll also have a press release and public social media posts about that as well. Those, both, both those meetings will cover the topic of transient rental in the city overall, and for members of the public that, if that's jargony, that's like Airbnbs, VRBOs, that's what we mean by transient rental. On the September 20th meeting, we'll also discuss a potential new overlay district near Lyons Park, because that's come up several times, and then on the October 4th meeting, we'll also discuss a potential overlay district on the west side of downtown near McDonough Street. And finally, the residents of the Cold Creek neighborhood have approached us with a desire to discuss the future of their neighborhood, they have questions about the history, the zoning, the lots that are for sale, the city's involvement and all of that, the potential for traffic calming, code compliance, and other topics, so we're finalizing the details on when and where that, that meeting will be now, and we'll share those on the city website, and we will also be in direct communication with the residents of Cold Creek to make sure everyone's invited to that meeting, so that's everything I have.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Zuloff?
So, hearing with great interest the Cold Creek meeting, I was there for that, I'm that old, for the approval of that subdivision, I'm, I'm hoping you can maybe review the minutes, pull the records, and get some clarification on what some of the discussions were there and what the expectations were there. It may be a tall order, because I don't know, I think the records have been moved around since then, but I hope they're available. I was, I'm kinda hoping, people are asking, what's, what's up with Battery Park, every planning commissioner should be interested if we're working on something at Battery Park, we're, we're boring holes and stuff, is, are we deliberating something there, or people are asking us, what, you know, what, what's up? I don't wanna be the last to know and be expected to, you know, approve a, approve a plan with, that I've never heard of before.
We haven't seen any plans, my understanding is that there is some due diligence happening, they're doing soil boring, so understand the, the developability of the soil, and then I know they've had a diver out, too, looking at the edges, just to start to see what kind of improvements would need to be made to make sure those edges are secure for the next 100 years.
Okay, so, so, so this is a possible transaction being negotiated, the, subject to some due diligence, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, the, whatever the due diligence the lessee is doing, there's already a lessee of that property, which is, there has been for decades and decades and decades.
Okay, so, so no, no pending sale negotiations or anything, is that what I'm hearing?
I mean, there's a current lease and lessee.
Yeah, I'm aware of the lease, but this, it doesn't mean you couldn't sell, you know, okay, so no.
What do you mean by the sale negotiations? There, there are numerous legal documents, and most of that is submerged land, that's not necessarily saleable land, we, there's a lessee of our submerged land lease, and there's an operator of the Battery Park Marina.
Oh, I see, so you, so that's, that's, we're getting, we're getting in the weeds here, but you're saying that upland that's subject to submerged land lease cannot be sold in fees, in fee?
I'm not answering that question specifically, I'm just saying that, that currently there's a lease, and there's a lessee, and they operate a marina there, and they're doing due diligence for any of their own future plans.
Sure, right, okay, so we're...
But generally speaking, it is, it is not easy to just sell submerged land, it's a very public process that involves ODNR.
I have a...
That, that too, I understand that, thank you.
You finished?
Mr. Jackson?
Yeah, I'm there.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes, I have a question. You said that they're gonna have a meeting about the Cold Creek development, is this the meeting that Mr. Holliday is heading? Okay.
Yes, my understanding is that there's been a back and forth with the schools as to whether they're allowed to convene a meeting because of COVID regulations, and so there's, they're, we're on a loop of getting ahold with them and helping organize that, which I understand that you've been...
Well, I can help you with, I can help, I can help you with that. On September 21st, the meeting will be held at Venice School at 5:30.
September 21st, excuse me?
Yeah, September 21st.
All, all the city knows, Mr. Jackson, is that when the city reached out initially at a staff level, they said, no, you can't use the building, and then when Dr. Sanders was asked, he said he could use the building, so the city's just getting some inconsistent answers, so we're trying to make sure everybody's on the same page, that's all.
Well, I, I talked to Dr. Sanders today, and he said...
He has to talk to his staff, too.
Yeah, I'm, I'm sure he has to talk to his staff, but I'm, I'm just saying that he, he initially said that he didn't see any problem with it, now if there's gonna be a problem with it, I'm sure he'll let me, I'm sure he'll let me know if...
That's kinda where we are, we're in that kinda back and forth right now.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I would like to request staff to email us all the list of those meetings if possible.
Well, that'd be great.
Yes, I saw a draft of that go from Ms. Messenberg's email to Mr. Webster's email today, in which I said, looks good, so we just need Mr. Webster to send it out to you, but yes, I would, thank you.
And I would also like to make sure that there's more flavors of ice cream than just cookie dough.
Noted.
Why?
I don't like cookie.
You're pushing it, you're pushing it there, Ms. Broney. Okay, thank you for the update, I'm sorry, I forgot about that.
Fine, thank you.
Any other business for the commission from the staff or from the commissioners? If not, then the court will rec, the, the chair will recognize the previous motion and second to adjourn, so stand adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner.
In theory, yeah.
Well, I'm not going anywhere, but there's so...
I just, I just tried to say the court will...[1796.11]